I'd like to call this meeting back into order. We've just left the executive session. It's time for mayor and council member comments. Are there comments from members of the council and the mayor? Seeing none. We have a presentation, proclamation for the American Legion Children and Youth Month. Have some representatives come forward. Probably can talk into the mic from way out here and get it sorted. We're all gonna end up coming around here and get our picture taken, but I'll read this proclamation to you now. So, "American Legion Children and Youth Month, April 1st through April 30th, 2016. Whereas the American Legion, since its founding in 1919, has devoted much of its talent, effort, and resources to improving conditions for our nation's youth. And whereas the Americanism, children and youth programs of the American Legion provide settings that permit children to realize and to achieve their full potential, and whereas legionnaires have labored unselfishly to achieve their goal through their untiring effort, dedicated leadership, and devotion to the overriding principles of these benevolent programs. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Joseph Domingo, Mayor of the City of Albion and the Albion City Council, do hereby proclaim the period of April 1st through April 30th as the American Legion Children and Youth Month, and call to the attention of all citizens the good work of the men and women of the American Legion." Congratulations, guys. Where do I give this to? I'll give that to you. So now, we have to do the picture, so... And if someone from the American Legion would like to make some comments after we do the photograph, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
So if someone would like to make a comment at this time, that'd be marvelous. Thank you, Tom.
On behalf of American Legion Post 55 Albion, I'd like to thank you for the proclamation for the youth of this, for the youth of Albion and Albion School District. Every year, we, for 4th and 5th graders, we give them awards for being outstanding students. And also during, this is, this will take place on April the 2nd in Homer, Michigan. We have approximately 20 to 30 students every year that we hand out certificates to plus medallions that they can remember us by. Also during this month, we're, I'm also in the process of selecting boys and girls for Boy State and Girl State. That takes place in June. So, these are programs that we work on with the school systems, Albion, Marshall, and Homer, and also this year, we have the academy, Marshall Academy, on our list. So, we're expanding every year, and we're touching a lot of young kids in the 4th and 5th grade.
Thank you very much. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any comments from citizens regarding the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes from March 21st, 2016, and special study session minutes, March 23rd, 2016.
So moved.
Support. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries. Thank you very much. Items for individual discussion. A, request approval of POLC contract.
So moved.
Thank you. Cheryl, if you wanna provide some...
Okay, mayor and council, what you have before you is the last of the four union agreements. This is for the Police Officers Labor Council, and also known as the POLC, is for the period of retroactive from January 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017. It contains the agreements that you have previously approved and the tentative agreement. They are incorporated within that document, and it also reflects the 2% increase in 2016 and the increase of 2% in 2017, as was applied in all the other union agreements.
Great. Any discussion questions? Okay, then roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Kraus.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes. B, request approval of Resolution 2016-19, a resolution to accept proposals for sidewalk construction and to approve the contract for sidewalk construction to RJ Karasek Company.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Cheryl, if you wanna help us out again.
Okay, mayor and council, if you recall, we had previous discussions in regards to the sidewalk program for 2016. This is based on the response of the RFPs that were issued, and this is our lowest qualified bidder in... Let me see, what was his name?
Karasek.
Yes, Karasek. And... I think that's basically it. So you have the acceptance of the RFP, and then the approval of the contract with the spender.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Garrett.
Just, yeah, I always say this when we have the sidewalk discussions, I just wanna make sure that we, you know, 'cause I hear concerns about the issues.
Right.
We don't have. So, making sure that we're aware of that and providing an opportunity for them to...
Opt out.
Opt out.
Right, right. No, I think that's very, actually, thank you, Councilman Brown. That's very important, I think, for us to, as we move forward with sidewalks, we bring to the council at some point sort of some processes that we can approve of moving forward, recognizing that we've had citizens supporting sidewalks that may or may not have had to do that. So, thank you. Come.
I'm just, and this is my bad, I'm just noticing under Section 9 of the contract, under contract with liability, property damage coverage, there is a zero missing. It should be 1 million.
Oh, right, yep, on the property damage side, yep.
I can add that additional zero and...
Okay. You'll cement that change?
I'll type in that extra zero and send that to both Joe and Cheryl.
He didn't. You'll cement that change for us?
Yes.
Before we have to tar and feather you. Okay, so, any other questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes. Item C. Request second reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-01, an ordinance to amend Section 2-388, sale of obsolete property.
So moved. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Cheryl, if you could just remind the audience what this is about?
At the request of council, we wanted to revise our approach to the sale of obsolete old equipment that we possess, personal property, and to enable our employees to have first dibbies.
Right.
On that equipment, so this ordinance addresses that issue. Subsequently, we will also be putting forth a policy as to the steps that'll be associated with that process internally.
Thank you. If there are no questions, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes. Item D, request approval of Resolution 2016-20, M-99 Superior Street, 4 to 3-lane conversion.
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Councilman Barnes.
Will this be the first or second reading, or this is it as presented?
Resolutions only get one reading.
Okay. May I refer to, have we done any research other than our discussions during our, I'm gonna call them break sessions, concerning this? Any citizens input, anything like that? Any concerns from business area down there?
If I could respond?
Sure.
We've been talking about this for about a year now, and we started off with the bike tour, actually, of the streets, and that was part of that process that incorporated a number of stakeholders. And last week, we had the public forum where approximately 30 people were in attendance, and they were able to have their questions answered as well. We publicized it as best we can, using our website and e-newsletter, the newspapers, and just talking with people to get them at least advice on what is being proposed. It was also shared with the chamber, and they circulated it among their membership as well. So, we have made every effort to at least get the information out there. It's, Albion still remains a difficult community in which to get information out to everyone, as you know, but we have tried as best we could, so...
And I would add that there was an open meeting at the library that, where we had seven or eight representatives, representatives from MDOT, providing information to citizens. I would say, what, 20 or 30 people came? And we heard concerns, and MDOT heard those concerns and actually provided some data. You might've gotten an email from Cheryl, I think, that had crash data that had been asked for at that open meeting at the library a couple, three weeks ago.
Okay, go ahead, I have to wait for you.
Yeah, sorry, Councilman Brown.
I spoke with Dr. Mitchell today. One of the things that I was, I suggested, and just throwing it out there, maybe we should, in a future, I guess soon, but in the paper, maybe take out a half-page ad and actually have, you know, a drawing of, you know, what we have and what it's gonna be converted to.
Right.
And then put that on the website, the...
Sure.
The newsletter and those kinds of things, just so people are aware.
Right.
So, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Well, my concern was, you know, the state put on a real good presentation right here at council, the bike lane, you know, he stated, doesn't have a connector yet. When we break down to three, there will be that space that he stated would be considered a bike lane.
Right.
I'm a little concerned about the safety and welfare of the citizens if we don't establish that as a bike lane, with or without a connector. So, when I'm out there riding my bike.
Right.
The citizens will know Mr. Barnes is riding his bike in a...
Right.
Illegal lane.
Right. Okay. Former councilman Wheaton raised his hand. I think he probably has some valuable wisdom to share with us.
Yes, my name is William Wheaton, 519 Division Street. I did not make the presentation to the library. What concerns me most is, what has the state devised for the trucks going through town and stopping at the railroad track without continuously tearing up the brick?
Right. So, I can respond to that, I think. We were at the meeting, that's the first thing that Councilman Kraus and I mentioned, and so what they are doing is, they're removing the entire road. So they're going all the way down to the substructure and rebuilding and repacking. They're gonna put in eight inches of concrete instead of the six that are there, and then the bricks on top with a spacing, what do they call it? Sort of an insulating thin layer of sand on top of the concrete that the bricks would sit on. They're also looking at adjusting the signaling so that trucks will not have to necessarily, if they get through one part of the intersection, they'll get through the whole intersection. So timing the Cass Street light to the Michigan Street light so that trucks don't have to stop and brake at that, at that intersection. So, they're looking at all those options. So structural improvements, but also timing improvements.
Over the past few years, the reason the brick has gone backward is because of torque.
Right.
In semis.
Right.
If the brick is not solid.
That's correct.
It's still gonna happen.
That's correct, that's correct. And they've, and they've assured us that the structure, the way the brick is gonna be done, will help alleviate that, that trucks will not be stopping in front of the railroad tracks and then starting, that the timing will be such that they'll be, that the light turning red on Cass Street, on Superior Street going north, that light will, will be timed so that trucks that get through the Cass Street light go north will also be able to get through the Michigan Street light.
That's good thoughts.
Yeah.
Hope it works.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes. E, request approval of Resolution 2016-21, M-99 Superior Street reconstruction, closing of access to alleys.
So moved.
Support.
So, Cheryl, can you...
This was actually the recommendation of Chief Scott Kip in regards to those alleyways and that it would, and make them accessible for pedestrians, as well as closing them off from traffic and increasing the opportunities for additional parking traps. They're not part of the bumpouts, which I don't think that those sections they could be. So it'll just make it safer overall and make it more walkable.
Right. Thank you. Questions? Councilman Brown.
Just, I know he's not here, but were there any, oh, he is here. Okay. Are there any, you know, let's say like emergency access considerations, or you don't think there's gonna be any issue to have to have an alternative way to get downtown or get down there?
The alleyways that are used right now are very, I think they're, the one alley is used by garbage trucks, but they would still have access from the backside of that to be able to get in there. The other alleyway is hardly used at all. They're one-way, if there is a car in there and there's people in there, there's not room to pass. And because there's not a lot of access from the parking areas in the rear towards those areas, I thought it would be safer for pedestrians if we had those access ways to walk to Main Street, but to go to the road on the other ways, it's probably even safer to go out at the intersections than it is to come out of the alleys the way you do onto Superior Street.
Okay. So are we just, we're talking about having it, you know, some places, they put up the, like, posts?
That would be my recommendation, stick a single post in the center of the alley at the sidewalk on Superior Street, still allowing vehicle access into the alley, but not through the alley onto the Superior Street, so...
Councilman Barnes.
Right next to the chambers, the alley and the Secretary of State. I recognize that there's some, that loading zone space will still be there for those owners.
Correct.
Okay. And these owners have been contacted, do we have plan to do this?
We will definitely follow up to make certain that they are aware of this.
This is a year out.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. So I'm concerned to think, give us some feedback before we do the final.
And there would be access to the alley from the backside, where you could actually get up in the alley if you were dropping something off or for deliveries like that. It just wouldn't be a throughway out to Superior Street, so...
Well, I just want them to, we're looking forward to doing it.
Yeah, no, good point. Councilman Kraus.
How many additional parking spaces will that give us?
Probably just one, maybe two. Well, it would give us one at each location, so, and maybe two at each location, but I'd be surprised if it was that many. Yeah, I don't know the measurements out there and how they're set up. I know the alleys have to have so much room on either side, they might fit two more cars in there, but I'm not sure.
Because I think we could, if business picks up downtown, which it's going to.
Oh, yeah. We could use the parking, definitely.
We could definitely use the parking.
Right. Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes. Letter F, request approval, Resolution 2016-22, the M-99 Superior Street reconstruction, City of Albion Transportation Alternatives Program grant application request.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? City manager.
Mayor and council, if you recall, our portion, our requirement for the local match is relative to the parking lanes, and because of the TAP grant, that has gone down to the 20% match, which is $23,347. So that has a significant impact on us financially, so I strongly recommend your acceptance of this grant and the TAP application for this project.
So I just have one question, it's probably an overall sort of question, and maybe now's not the right time to ask, but what is the total cost of all aspects of the project that's gonna come out of our budget, regardless of whether it's, you know, from the sidewalk mileage or the street mileage, or from our general fund? What, how much are we actually having to pay out of our budget, and how much is it gonna, is being paid by other people?
Jim Leonardson, Director of Public Services, if he could respond to that question.
My understanding, as part of the TAP grant, as Cheryl's indicated, it's reduced our financial responsibility significantly. I think the original number was like $116,000, and we're down to $23,000.
Right. So the 160, I'm sorry, the 116 was sort of our contribution toward a 1.8 million or whatever
Correct.
Dollar project, and now we're at 20?
Now we're at $23,000, thanks to the 20% TAP grant. Along with that, you're going to see a little over $46,000 in water main and connection work there. Which will be our responsibility, that's our portion.
Okay.
Which is basically 10% of the entire project.
Right.
So...
That's fantastic.
It is.
Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Kraus.
I guess I'm a little bit, a little confused by this resolution. Since it says here, Jim, you said that, that didn't include sewer and water main, that the TAP grant isn't going to include the sewer and the water main, and yet it says that that's part of the, I guess that's the next resolution. Well, that's probably why it doesn't make any sense at this point. Thank you.
You are welcome.
Good job, good job.
Good catch.
If there are no other questions or comments, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes, thank you. G, request approval, Resolution 2016-23, M-99 Superior Street reconstruction, City of Albion Water Main replacement.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion or questions? Now we can have Jim come back, right?
Well, if you want to, mayor and council, I think it's pretty much spelled out in the resolution, what the total cost for the project is relative to the water main replacement, that's $462,000. Our mix is the 10%, which is $46,200.
Fantastic, fantastic. Excellent work on everybody, the city and, and our MDOT allies to help bring this cost down. Any other questions or discussion? If not, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes. H, request approval, Resolution 2016-24, resolution to approve Holland Park Grant application to Enbridge Donation Program of the Kalamazoo River Community Recreational Foundation Bridge Grant.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you.
Move your mic up, Len, so we can actually hear you. There you go. All right, question?
Mayor and council, it recently came to my attention that the Enbridge Donation Program existed, and they, in fact, they have just received some significant additional funding. So what we were looking for particularly was a funding source to support the repaving of the basketball court.
Oh.
Or at Holland Park. And so I contacted them in regards to doing that, and they said, well, most of the applications are actually up to $35,000. I said, well, that's not a problem.
We'll take it.
So we included in that the items that have already been identified as part of the Holland Park transformation, and that included the, the handicapped accessibility for the rest, and then some of the cleanup of the river, hopefully, because since this is a river-oriented.
Right.
Trent.
Nice.
Since there's a lot of debris in the river in that passageway, so we are asking your permission to apply for that grant application.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Barnes.
Yes, I'd like to thank Enbridge because when they first began giving out money, there was talk about cleaning that part of the, of the river and putting in a boat dock. Is, I wanna know, I got two other questions. Is the boat dock still on the agenda, and will we be tearing down the old bathrooms and coming across?
No, we're not tearing down.
I mean, anyway, so they're just gonna upgrade. Well, I wanna thank Enbridge very, very much.
Was the application, we haven't received the funding yet.
My, my, just, just for a little pun, when I read it in my packet, it sounds like that they're trying to give it to us.
Yeah. I would also like to, once again, thank Councilwoman Reed for all the work that she's done on this park project for the last three years, four years.
Well, I'd like to thank Mrs. Mitchell.
Absolutely.
I had heard about the MDOT, I mean, I had heard about the grant from Enbridge, but I hadn't had a chance to work on it, and she's so proactive on everything until she just got right busy.
Amen.
And got that done, and that makes me very happy because it's a lot of work, getting things together like that, and she's good at grant writing and, and stuff like that, and so it's just a big help because we, we're trying to get the part finished so that it's gonna be useful for everyone.
Right.
So, you know, I sincerely appreciate it.
Yeah, that's great, it's great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cheryl.
And I do want to also thank our staff because we work very closely together on all of these grant applications, so in particular, I want to thank Larry Williams because he did the majority of the write-up associated with it that you see, as well as John Tracy is always there to help us with the maps and just the detailed information, and our DPW and Harry Longdon, as well as Jim, he's always there for us to help with that information, and it's their staff that actually helps support these projects, so it's truly a team effort.
Great, thank you so much.
And I'd like to say, I'm so pleased because Harry, I have been asking him for the back of the bathroom area to put the handicap accessible bathroom, and he finally gave it to us, and so now we have that, so we don't have to build on to it, all we have to do is get that part fixed up.
Right.
And so, cool, and thank you.
That's great, thank you. I, city manager report.
Did you guys vote?
Oh, we haven't voted, you're right. Sorry, we were feeling so good about the grant, we didn't actually vote. So can I have a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed. And Mayor Protam French.
Yes, thank you. Now it's time for the city manager report.
All right, thank you. Okay, you have before you a couple of documents that I had relative to my report. The first of one, I also sent out an email, and I just wanted to get a consensus from council. If you recall, the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority had applied for the $250,000 grant to help us with light illumination, especially along our corridors. The good news is, we received the grant, the bad news is, it was only half of what we asked for, so that one required us to reduce the number of properties that are included in this round. And also, the question I have for you is, our original match, which was 7%, what could go down because the grant amount has gone down?
Sure.
Or we could keep that funding level the same at the $16,288, which the land bank has agreed to match, continue to match, which will allow us to add additional two properties to the demolition for this year. So I'm asking your consensus on if we can keep that grant match at the same level so that we can maximize the impact.
I think it should.
So the question is, does that need to be a motionable action that the council member, because it does represent more than $5,000 being, or because it's in the original budget of the proposal, then we don't? That's, I just want to know procedurally. We are, the original grant had the match at 1628, which we approved when we...
Right.
Do we need to take action other than just say, take a voice vote, or do we, does it have to become a, you know, agenda?
If you already approved it at something over $5,000, I would say you don't need to approve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure.
What you're using it for has changed, so we just need agreement that it's okay to change what how it's being used.
It would have to be written up.
All right.
So should we just quickly give that approval, or do we want to talk about it first?
We'd have to change the agenda and...
Yeah.
I mean, we could.
Are there any objections? Okay, that works for me. Okay.
I don't have any objections, but he is the lawyer. I thought that we would have to amend the language or...
If you want to take official action, you'd have to...
I would like to, because it's financial. It's just, I'm only one vote.
Well, no, there actually had to be two of them. There'd have to be a vote to amend the agenda to add that on as an action item, which...
We can do.
I think we should.
And then you have to vote on the items.
Okay.
I move there'd be, amend the agenda to include this as, I don't know what the item would be, but...
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda as necessary to add the approval of the reallocation of the $16,288, which represents a 7% grant match from the City of Albion for a large grant in cooperation with the CCLBA. Can I have a roll call vote, please? We already had the second, so do we have a roll, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton French.
Yes. Now that we've adjusted the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the reallocation of this same $16,288?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? So, city manager, will you just tell us again that this $16,000 of how it will be used, and how is it different than what we originally agreed to?
What you had originally agreed to was a match of $6,288, but that was under the assumption that we would have a $250,000 grant that could remove approximately 23 properties. With half that amount, we were looking at a reduced match of 7%, and I don't see that dollar amount in front of me, but, but that would mean that 11 properties would be eligible to be demolished. If we keep the match at the $16,288, with the county also matching at that amount, we could add an additional two properties for a total of 13 properties to be demolished as a part of this grant application.
Excellent, thank you. Any discussion? If not, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton French.
Yes. City manager.
All right. City of Albion just received word that we are the recipient of the DEQ Excellence in Recycling Award for our expanded program in partnership with Calhoun County. So there will be a Governor's Recycling Summit on May 3rd in Plymouth, and they will be giving out those awards, as well as Calhoun County was recognized where they're working in our area as well, so we're very proud of that partnership and the success of that program. Also, MML Workers Compensation Fund has given us an award for one of only 33 municipalities in the entire state to receive a recognition for our loss control achievement relative to a safe workplace environment, so we're very proud of that, and congratulations to all of our staff. And Representative John Vison is having a budget boot camp on this coming Monday at the Marshall Regional Law Enforcement Center. If you're interested, I have the contact information there, they are asking for an RSVP if you wish to attend, and we're really excited. The AmeriCorps Vista announcement, official kickoff is going to be tomorrow afternoon at 4:30 PM. It's going to be accompanied by a multi-generational job fair, which will be at Washington Gardner from 4:30 to 7:00 PM. We're looking forward to having up to 11 people, workers, here to help us with our capacity building relative to eliminating poverty and enforcing some better policies and just improving our capacity. And I do believe that Councilmember Proton, Mayor Proton, is the coordinator from the college in regards to that, so...
That is correct.
So we're very excited about what that's going to bring to our...
And that'll be in the gymnasium of the Washington Gardner Building, so...
Okay. And the Canadian Council General, Mr. Douglas George, is going to be on the college campus this week, I think that's, when is it, Wednesday? Wednesday? So that's open to the public as well. The Calhoun County Senior Fair is Thursday, the 7th, at Marshall Middle School from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM. The Albion Hotel Groundbreaking, in case you haven't noticed, the vehicles are there and they're starting the remediation inside the buildings, and the demolition will start shortly after that, and they're having their ceremonial groundbreaking on Thursday, May 12th at 10:30. And... The Albion-Marshall Connector, it's increased to a five-day-a-week service, and the ridership has increased tremendously, and it's at least 80% Albion residents, so it's getting a great deal of usage from our local residents, because as you know, we don't have a local transportation system, so it is really helpful, as people are now using it to get to work, as well as to their doctor's appointments and shopping and for entertainment purposes. So I've asked them to come to an upcoming meeting, most likely our next one, to talk about the system, as well as, they need additional funding to be sustainable for the long term, to talk about some of the ideas that perhaps we can look at locally to support and continue this very vital program. Last week, I was able to attend the MML Capital Conference, they had a lot of great information, really insightful, MML has taken an initiative relative to revenue sharing and how it has declined tremendously over the years relative to local communities and how that's impacting our ability to provide efficient services. But I also shared with you a link, because all of the presentations are actually online, so if you're interested in diving a little deeper into all the presentations, and they have a great deal of helpful information, that information is available to you electronically. All of our staff is getting the active shooter training, and if you weren't scared before, you will be after that training, but it's really useful information in terms of what you should do in unfortunate circumstances so that you're at least prepared to respond appropriately. And we will be looking at putting some additional policies in place, as well as putting some physical features in place in our buildings and workplaces to try to make them as secure as possible. It's a little bit challenging when you're a public entity, because you do want to be open and accessible to the public, but you also have to make sure that we're as safe and as feasible under those circumstances.
Yeah, pretty good.
And as you know, we had the redevelopment-ready community kickoff last week, approximately 25 people were in attendance, and we look forward to moving forward. MEDC has gone through a number of staff reductions, reductions, and so they're a little bit slower in the process than we would like, but they are moving forward, and we will continue to move forward as well with our planning for our downtowns and neighborhoods as well. And as you are already aware, we had the public forum from MDOT, approximately 30 people were in attendance, so there was a lot of good feedback and answers to a number of questions that were raised that day. That concludes the panel.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our city manager from the council? All right, moving on, future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items to bring forth?
Just the sidewalk, then.
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
Oh, right, sure, sure, the sidewalk. Agreements or policy changes, yeah. Others? Okay. Oh, sorry, thank you.
Well, as long as we're talking about sidewalks, I'd like to see, have an idea of where we're doing them this year.
Oh, right.
Because I have, I already have citizens asking about it, so...
Sure. It can wait until next meeting.
It doesn't have to be today.
Yeah.
Have they already been selected, or are you making suggestions?
I'm sorry?
Have they already been selected?
Yes. Yes, we have to have that all for the, to prepare that proposal, we have to have the amount of sidewalk identified, because it's bid by square footage and length, obviously, so that's all in place.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Others? Do I have a motion to excuse our mayor?
So moved.
Or? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?